Consent works.
We are on YouTube. No one on Zoom yet, okay. We have the council and click out here. And no one else remotely. Okay, then with that, let's go ahead and get started. Commissioner Lee is out of reach. We knew he was going to be out of town. His intention was to participate by phone. That looks like it's not working out, so we'll go ahead and suspend the rules and have just the two commissioners vote on anything that comes up unless Commissioner Lee comes in later, then we will change that back to three. But we'll go ahead and get things started. All right. We'd like to begin today's commission meeting with a prayer, reading, or thought, and ask someone to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Would anyone be here that would like to do either one? Yes, ma'am. Pledge? Thank you. And anyone could offer, lead us in prayer or reading our thought? Would you, sir? Thank you. Please come up and identify yourself. You do come up to the podium then.
You first.
You first, yes.
Right for prayer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our dear county representative, Father, may I ask you to please be with us and help us do that will? And to do what's right for the citizens of this great county, for this great country. Please be with us and guide us and protect us when we say these things in this sun, Jesus Christ, Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, Aaron Saban.
Please stand, bullet of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have Ralph Barnes. Are you, can you hear us, Ralph? You're muted right now.
Yes, yes, I can hear you just fine.
Okay. And what we'll now do is we'll go look at the regular agenda items and the ones that we have previously reviewed and we have no questions about and we approve, then we'll move that to the consent agenda section. And then after that is done, we will then go into the work session to review or hear the presentation. And then once that's finished, we'll go back to the regular agenda and review the remaining items that we have not moved to the consent agenda section. So with that, again, there's two commissioners at this point. We'll go ahead and review one through 10. Are there any items that need to be discussed? Previously, I was contacted by our civil division that four, five, and six need to be continued one week to August 10th. And that item seven needs to be continued to two weeks to August 17th. Is that correct, Ben?
That's correct, commissioners. That's our recommendation based on requests from our grants office and from Saratoga Springs.
Okay, they need to finalize the contractual reviews. Okay.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Any others, Mia? Okay, numbers then 11 through 20.
I'm gonna hold number 18.
Hold number 18 to discuss that item. And my, no others is appreciate those who have contributed to the Utah County Fair. That has been an ongoing, growing list, so for that, we're grateful. Thank you. Now we'll move to items 21 through 30.
So for item 21, I think we're good approving it on consent unless you guys want to speak to it, and then we can hold it so you can speak to it, or if you're fine, we'll approve it on consent.
I have none. Bryce, do you have anything additionally you need to add? None? Okay.
I think we're good just to prove it. All right. Okay, so then I, we won't hold 21. We're good there.
Okay.
So 21 through 30, I don't have any.
22, I think we need to just briefly hold that because it's unless we can just simply take the action now. That one is a, instead of opposing the date, I think we should set the date for August 17th, Wednesday, August 17, 2022, at 2:00 in this office.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I think we can do that on consent.
On consent, okay. So 21 to 30, I have no other items other than that one.
No, I'm good there, too.
And that we have any numbers of 31 to 34? I have none.
Same. I've got none.
You have none. And I also understand from the civil and human resources that there are no closed items. So 35, 36, 37, and 38 should be strict. Is that correct still?
That's correct. We have, yeah, nothing that we have to do today.
Okay, Ralph, do you have any others since we last spoke?
No.
Okay, so those last four, 36 to 30, or it's gonna be 35 to 38 are stricken. I was hoping for a multi-hour meeting today. I apologize. So with that, Alice, could you review what we had just gone through?
You bet. Okay, I have us holding regular items number four, five, and six, one week to August 10th. Sorry, continuing those items, four, five, and six. Continuing number seven, two weeks to August 17th. Holding 18. And then as far as closed meetings, we're striking all three, 35, 36, 37, and 38.
Okay, that's what I had. Okay. Well, thank you. Then with that, all that has been moved to consent, we will now move to the work session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me time on the work session. And, you know, originally you'd given me 15 minutes, and I can take you to three hours if you'd prefer.
You know what? You probably could. You and I have talked in the past, and so you probably could.
I just gave Nate a heart attack. I told him this was going to be eight minutes, so I appreciate Nate for being here. He's kind of my, my support and my backup. But I'm really excited to meet today and let you know about Utah County Property Watch Notification. This is a free service that our citizens can subscribe to, which will allow them to watch their properties that they subscribe for. Now, this is not a fraud protection. This is a notification. And as you both know, our information is already available for free, and people have already been able to watch their own properties free of charge. But this service will send them a notification if there has been activity in their abstract. And so therefore, we're calling it Utah County Property Watch. It is subscription-based, and it does require them to enter their serial number and an email, which the email then is verified. So, oh, thanks, Nate. I can't multitask, apparently. So this is the subscription page that they would go to. They can put in their serial number. And we'll, when I get through this, we'll do a quick little demo so that you can see exactly the whole process. But this is where they will put in their property serial number. Once they have that in, they can do it by search by name or business, and then they hit the search. And then it takes them to this next page where they, down below, it'll show the owner, the serial number, the mailing address, and then they hit subscribe. And that's that orange button toward the bottom. Once they hit subscribe, they will then be notified at that email. So here's an example of what they would receive. It's a copy of the document detail screen, and we're sending them through the email a PDF of the document that hit their abstract that caused us to give them a notification. I don't know if you can read that document right there, but it's, it's a pretty unique document. It's from my predecessor, Randy Covington. And as he was leaving, he dialed the offices in this building and the windows, the desks, the chairs, and the high-back maroon chair to the recording clerk's trust. So this was just a cute document that was prepared. As you can see, there's not a real entry number, but this would be the type of document that had someone recorded against their own property. This, this is, you know, they get to see the actual real document that was recorded.
For in the sum of, what was the wording? The sum of hard work.
Yeah.
And viable service.
Yeah. We've got a great team. We'll get to that at the end of this. So once, once you sign up and you've given your emails information, then you get some email verifications. And you have to verify your email in order for the subscription to happen. So here's an example. You know, you click here to verify your email, and then it tells you that you are successful, and here are your serial numbers that you subscribed to, and here are your active subscriptions. You can also unsubscribe. So if you move and you no longer need to watch one of your properties, then you just unsubscribe to it, and you're on your way. So the last slide we have to show you are our legal notices, some of our document controls and monitoring. The Utah County Recorder email notification is offered as a courtesy, and it is not designed to prevent fraud. Obviously, there are no guarantees or warranties associated. It's informational purposes only. We don't say that you're going to receive absolutely everything or that you're not going to receive things. If you have questions, you know, you discuss it with your own legal counsel. The Recorder's Office does not and cannot provide legal advice, and we're not liable for damages of any kind, so. And we reserve the right to terminate this service at any time for anyone. Only public records are provided, protected records, and properties that are under the protected category by state code will not be presented. We can monitor, and we will monitor, the usage, the subscriptions, all of that kind of stuff. So our legal team has been involved in this, and they're comfortable, and we're excited and ready to go. After I presented this to the department heads and the elected officials Monday, when I got back to my office, my first phone call was about Property Watch. And the gentleman didn't know we had launched it. He just had seen something and had a question, and I was able to walk him through, and he was so excited. So let's walk through real quickly, Nate. So here are a couple of places that you can find Property Watch. It is on the Recorder's, well, let's go to the county main page. Right up there in the top, Property Watch. Click that, Take Shatua. Here's a little blurb about it, second one down on the county's recent news. And then it is on the Recorder webpage, the third icon over. If you click there, we go to Property Watch. And we enter in our serial number.
I'm gonna look up my name, just as for the demo.
Okay, perfect. So we'll search first by name. And again, thank you tonight for being willing to, to demo his info. So he put in his name, he hit subscribe. It brought up the serial number. He's giving us his email, and he's saying subscribe. And what's happening behind the scenes is it's sending out an email to his email telling him, go verify that this is you. He gets the email, please verify. Click here. And ta-da, he's verified, and he can return to Property Watch. Now, he received a second email as well, saying, here are your pending and/or active subscriptions. So because this is email-driven, your personal email is where your active subscriptions are tracked. Because I don't know what your email is, what you may have signed up under. And so I can't, without doing a lot of background work, say, Commissioner Sakovich, these are your active subscriptions. I can say, check your email. So that's it. It's that simple. When something, if something hits your abstract that you're unaware of, even if you're aware of it. So if you do a refinance, you're gonna get noticed. If you sell your property, you may get a notice. If there is an overall county ordinance that hits all of the properties in Utah County, everyone who has subscribed is going to get that notice. This is to make the citizens aware that have subscribed when there is activity on their abstract. So again, it's something that they've always been able to see. They've just had to log on to the website and look at their own abstract, and they can see the, the activity that is going there. So now let me brag to you about my team. A little over a year ago, I stood here and requested additional staff so that we could become compliant with state code. And I'm here to report to you that as of January 2022, my team was compliant in entry and recording, and we have maintained that. Our mapping team, it took them a couple of months longer, but they are now compliant within two weeks of recording, having documents name changed, parcels created, splits created, and subdivisions recorded. I printed this where we were at in entry right before I came into the meeting. And as of 13:46, we had nine documents waiting to be entered for today, and we had less than 200 to be proofed. So that is amazing. My team has done amazing work. They have worked extremely hard to become compliant and to maintain that compliance. And we are now starting to work backward and pick up those items that needed to be processed more thoroughly and get the bulk of the information, not just the pertinent information entered. And I am so pleased with my team. They have done amazing, and...
You should be. The state standard is, what's the turnaround? You mentioned two weeks for mapping. Is it the same for the other?
The code requires that name changes be submitted to the assessor's office by August 15th for the first part of the year, and then the 15th of every month after. We're able to get that information to them within that two-week timeframe, rather than months and months behind. Never were we as far behind as some people wanted to say we were, but we were not compliant, and we are extremely compliant and have been since January.
So title companies are happy with us again?
Title companies should be very happy with us again. So again, I appreciate your time, and thank you for allowing us to do our job and to be successful. Any questions?
I just signed up for Property Watch while you were showing us. It worked just like you said it would. Searched my name, found my property, signed up, verified my email, done.
Great. Doesn't take long at all.
You're amazing. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, that is the only item we have for the work session, so now we'll move to the regular agenda. And we have item number 18 to discuss and approve or deny a tax sale protest filed by Marilyn, Marlin Bates, attorney in behalf of the Security Service Federal Credit Union, related to parcel number, and that's the last four, 0045. I read the protest. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, if you remember, this was continued from two weeks ago. We didn't hear it last week because I was out of town. But this is a protest that was made by the attorneys who are representing the Security Service Federal Credit Union, who have initiated a foreclosure action against the property owner. The property was on the sale. It was sold as an undivided interest. What's unique about this situation is that the undivided interest garnered a, a bid that created a surplus or a, an overage that could be distributed back to both the homeowner and the, and the bank. My conversation with the bank seemed to indicate that the amount that the bank is attempting to foreclose over that is delinquent could be satisfied with the amount that was collected at the tax sale. But apparently, there was, there was something they were trying to do or get done, but Mr. Bates wasn't able to do. I'm surprised to see that he's not on Zoom or here in person, because really, what's at issue right now? Marlin Bates? Okay, excellent. Okay, you gotta let him in. So great. We've got Mr. Bates here on Zoom. Really, what's at issue right now with, with this sale is, as I stated two weeks ago, you know, it's our duty, it's our requirement by state law to notify all recorded interest in the property. And that was something that I openly admitted we, we missed on this one. We did send a notification to security service, but unfortunately, we missed sending the notice to Mr. Bates' office. And of course, on that basis, the, the commission is fully able to overturn the sale. What's at question really right now is whether or not the proceeds from the sale could satisfy the bank's lien, if the bank, and if the bank would feel that they would be made whole through the proceeds from the sale, that can easily be directed from the court and paid directly from the county to satisfy that lien. And then any origin, of course, would go back to Mrs. Collins to help her with her financial situation. And of course, the buyers who paid for the 3% ownership interest in the property would then also have their bid protected under Utah State law, statute 59-2-1357.5 or 7.1, anyways.
We're gonna have to evaluate your performance if you don't get this right.
51.7, sorry. 1351.7. That's, I, I have that one memorized because that comes up a lot. Anyways, so, yeah, I mean, the bidder's, the bidder's interest is protected, and they're guaranteed either their pro-rata share of the property if it was sold or the amount that they paid, which would actually be plus 12%, which actually ended up being about $190,000. And I noticed that the bidders have recorded a deed of trust on the property. I guess, you know, to secure the amount that they paid, which we haven't transferred any ownership yet because we haven't recorded the taxi, because this, this property hasn't yet been ratified, which if the, if the sale's not overturned, then I will put that on the commission agenda next week to be ratified, so we can then, we can then issue a deed. Anyways, really, all, from, from our point of view, there's certainly, there's certainly cause to overturn the sale and reject the bid if the, if the commission feels that's the best interest. Or if the parties involved feel that the, that the sale can be done and that the bank can be satisfied with their lien, I think we're, I think we're, our offices would have no, no issue with that either. So anyways, I think it's just a matter of the parties.
Just a quick comment here. As Bert mentioned, we did not notify the trustee of the trust deed. And so... deed, and so, my, my advice is that, sort of the default here is that you would be prepared to overturn the sale, to grant the appeal, grant the protest, overturn it, unless Mr. Bates withdraws his appeal. That would be the only scenario where you should consider not overturning the sale. And so, again, Mr. Bates and his law firm had a right to notice. They didn't get it, so it should be overturned, unless, as the factors that Bert went through would, would persuade him for whatever reason to withdraw that appeal.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
So, let's, let's hear from...
Let's hear from Mr. Bates.
Yeah, let's hear from Mr. Bates now.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Is my audio coming through all right?
Yes, it is.
Very good. Thank you. Haven't participated this way before, but as was mentioned, I'm the trustee under the deed of trust for the credit union who had commenced foreclosure in this process. The interesting thing about Utah County is that it handles these tax sales differently, I guess, than another county does in permitting this proportionate sale of the property itself. And then what adds to this being unusual is the fact that there was an overage that was generated by the sale itself. And we have never gone through the process of attempting to get excess proceeds from a county, because to my experience, they've never been generated before. And so, the bottom line, I guess, is this. The credit union is owed approximately $22,500. It's not as large a mortgage debt as many are. And if, although our initial impression was that we don't want that tax sale to go through, so that our deed of trust remains against 100% of the property and is available for foreclosure, if you tell me that in these unique circumstances, because there was excess proceeds generated by the sale itself, and if those excess proceeds are sufficient to be able to pay the credit union, the $22,500 approximately that it's owed, then we have, as a recourse, the ability to go after those excess proceeds to be paid in order to release our deed of trust from the property, and then it doesn't matter as much to us whether you decide to set aside the tax sale, or do not decide to set aside the tax sale. If someone could explain to me, who understands Utah County's process, what is the process of making application for the $22,500 from what appears to be the excess proceeds generated by the tax sale?
That's an excellent question, and in fact, I'm happy to, I mean, Paul just came and said, don't, don't make any big, big promises here, but I would like to, but I'm not going to...
Maybe we should have the lawyer answer the question. Why don't we have Paul answer the question on how, what the process is?
I was just gonna point Mr. Bates and the, and the commission to the new ordinance that was recently, was amended this year, that put into place the claim process for a claimant to make a claim on unclaim, on excess funds directly through the county. Our process was, used to, used to be that we would send it directly to the state, and we went processing claims. We've, we've, the attorney's office looked at that, crafted the ordinance, and I probably should let Paul really handle that, because it's really, comes down to them.
Yeah, basically, we did adopt an ordinance a few months ago, the Board of Commissioners did, allowing parties to make claims on excess proceeds, and it requires a court order. So, we would not be able to sit here today and say what the court would order. Mr. Bates would need to go through, would need to file a petition with the fourth district court, and get an order, ordering the county to release excess proceeds to him on behalf of his client.
Now, we recently had somebody go through this process, right?
We had somebody initiate this process, and it's still working through the system.
Okay.
So, so...
Because it's brand new.
So, yes and no. Yeah, somebody, somebody did do that for last year's tax sale. So, yeah, I mean, we, again, the loan's 22.5, and the property was, well, I guess more importantly, the tax amount owed, anyway.
Ask me hard questions. It's about $20,000 in taxes, yes.
Okay, so about $20,000 in taxes, 22.5 in back, and so, we would collect our amount first, right?
We've already done that. Yeah, it's already been paid.
So, we collect ours first, and then, and the excess amount, if Mr. Bates puts in a claim on behalf of his client in the court, and then the court orders us to pay them, then we give them that amount.
Yep.
And then, the current dish homeowner would then go through that same process, put in a claim, or we could send it to the state, and they could claim it from the state.
Exactly.
And the current owners are still, are here, as they were two weeks ago.
Right, and also, Mr. Bates could also elect not to file a petition with the court, and just make a claim on the money as, after we transfer to the state.
Oh, yeah, or we can transfer to the state, and they can make the claim to the state.
Right. Yeah, he would have two options there. In either case, we would not, we're not in a position to guarantee anything, because it would be subject to a court order or the discretion of the state treasurer's office to release those funds.
Right. We can't guarantee, but we don't necessarily foresee an issue.
We wouldn't oppose probably any of the actions.
Yeah, we wouldn't oppose any of the actions. Okay.
To make all three parties whole, the, the county is taken care of, the, the bank would be taken care of, and the current owners would be taken care of.
And the, and the winning bidders get, get their ownership interest secured to the property through a deed.
Right, and so, the current owners, though, they could be made whole, because they would get the difference in the sale.
Until they sold the property.
Right, well, the, the, the winning, the winning bidders, they paid $160,000 for their 3% ownership. By, as per Utah law, whatever is not, whatever is not needed to pay off the taxes, is then considered a...
Excess proceeds.
Excess proceeds, thank you. It's considered an excess proceeds, and those excess proceeds are due back to the owner, or anyone that has a, or anyone, or any other legitimate interest, legitimate claim on that money. In the case of the bank, that would likely be, and of course, I'm not guaranteeing anything, because a court would need to decide that, or they would need to make a claim, but they can make a claim on that funds. Mrs. Collins can make a claim on that funds, and that's basically what the bidders felt to pay for their 3% ownership. And again, state statute does guarantee their, basically, their investment in the property by either the pro-rata share of the property when it was sold, or what they paid plus 12%. So, these are, so, I mean, all three parties can be made whole, but again, it, it really comes down to if the bank, if Mr. Bates on behalf of his client feels like that's in his client's best interest to proceed that way. For, just the reference, for Mr. Bates' reference, the county ordinance that we're referring to is, it's on the, it's in our Muni code system, and it's ordinance number, yeah, it's ordinance number 3.04.150 excess proceeds. So, if he would like to, if, even if, if he would like to maybe even request a continuous of this for, so he can review that and maybe review that with his client, but that is the ordinance, that would be, that would be a procedure I would refer him to. Otherwise, the other process would be to overturn this, would be to reject the bid. We'd simply refund the bid, plus the, what the buyer paid back to that end. That would maintain the, the trustee in the entire property, maintain the bank's ability to continue their foreclosure, or, or proceed with the foreclosure if they, if they chose to. Also, still gives Mrs. Collins a chance to work with the bank on, on that too as well.
Yeah, if we approved this request, it would allow all parties to do that.
Yeah, and I'd like to point out that we're not necessarily advocating for one thing here or the other. As Paul stated, it's, it's appropriate and, and recommended that the, the commission strongly consider overturning the sale because we missed the notice, but it's just, it's just a unique, this is just a unique circumstance, so.
Mr. Bates, do you have any other additional questions for the council and taxpayers?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, the ordinance, just to be sure I've got it right then, is 3.04.150?
Yeah, 3.04.150. It's called excess proceeds.
And, and when did that become effective?
It became effective, I wanna say probably in, was it, we, it was passed in March. I would, I, I'm sorry, someone knows Muni code better than I do can tell me when we...
As far as I know, it becomes active when it passes.
That's right. As a matter of law, it's active after a certain amount of publication, after it's passed by this body, and so...
15 days after.
15 days, so sometime in March, then.
And it became effective, essentially, it became effective before the sale happened.
Yeah, late March, early April.
Yeah, it would apply to all proceeds this year, for sure.
Okay.
And actually...
And then, as I predicted, go ahead?
I was just gonna say, actually, it was effective last November, because we originally passed it November, and then we had to adopt it into Muni code. So, it was actually passed when our, under the old ordinance system, and then, but unfortunately, it was left out of Muni code because of that transition.
So, as I represented the court then, in filing a petition for these excess proceeds, when should I say the effective date of this ordinance was?
That's something we can calculate with you offline, have a future conversation about as we research it. I believe it was actually passed in October originally.
Thank you.
And, but the exact date, we can find that. Probably not ideal to try to figure that out while we're, while we're in a public meeting now, but if you could reach out to Mr. Harvey or one of us.
I can, we can get you that information, Mr. Bates.
Okay, thank you so much. The other information I think I need in order to petition the court is the exact accounting of what was paid, what the county is taking out for its taxes, what remains, so that I can represent to the court that the approximately $22,500 were owed is in fact being held by, and it's Utah County that's holding that, correct?
That's correct. At the current, at the current time, we are still holding on to the funds.
Okay. So, the unique challenge of this is that this hasn't been done before. There's not a judge that's ruled that this process works, although I have no, I, I have no doubt it will be upheld by a judge, once we explain to him how this new process works. I petition for excess proceeds under Utah State law with foreclosures all the time. I, I do that a lot.
And we could do it that way, too. I mean, we could send, we could send the money to the state, and you could petition the state, if you wanted to do it that way.
That, I don't. There's a difference there. When it's done on a foreclosure sale, it's not deposited with the state. It's deposited with the court, the district court itself. And then we go to that district court, and they have the money in their funds. They see it's there that we're petitioning for. What's unique about this process that's been set up is that the court doesn't know what money is being held, because it's not being held by the court. It's being held by the county. We will represent to the court that it's being held by the county. The court will need to verify that. I guess the response is somehow filed by the county verifying that the funds are held. And then with that in place, I don't suspect there'll be a problem with the court ordering that the amount that's owed to us be paid to us. And with that court order in place, then I expect that the county will be able to pay us with those proceeds. And if that all happens, then we're okay with the tax sale that took place. We're fine petitioning the court for those excess proceeds, and, and if, if the county is inclined not to set aside the tax sale, because we have those excess proceeds we can go after, we're okay with that result as well.
So, you are okay if we deny the tax, tax sale protest? Did I hear you right?
Yes. If, if, if there are proceeds sufficient to pay us the $22,500 were owed, then I would be willing to withdraw my protest of the tax sale itself.
Okay, all right.
I would like to point out before the commission takes an action, I did reach out to the, the winning bidders. I heard back from a Nick Stone, no, I'm sorry, it wasn't Nick Stone. I heard back from one of his partners. I'm trying to find his name. If he's on the call and would like to weigh in, would he please raise his hand? We also do have Mrs. Collins and her, and her daughters here too as well, if, and probably should hear from them before you make any final decisions.
Is there anyone else online? I don't see anybody on the screen. No one else is here.
I'd probably just encourage a clear statement from Mr. Bates that, that he's withdrawing his appeal if that's his, if that's his request.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Let me, let me say it as clearly as I possibly can. What has been explained to me in this meeting is that there are excess proceeds in an amount exceeding $22,500, above and beyond what was paid to the county for their taxes, which is being held and available for me to petition the court for. If the answer to that is yes, there are funds being held that, that everyone understands under the new ordinance could be paid to the credit union upon the order of the court, the answer to that is yes, then my position with the court is that we are willing to go that process and petition the court for those excess proceeds, and withdraw our objection to the, our protest of the tax sale.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a family member that would like to speak to this?
Kylie Adams, speaking for my mom. We would like this to go through, so if there's no denying it, that way, we can have that money, we can get the bank paid, of course, taxes paid, and we can help my mom with her living situation.
Okay.
So, you're okay if we deny this appeal from Mr. Bates, too, then?
We deny the pill. That'd be great.
Okay, and you guys are okay, we'll hold the money until the bank gets their excess funds, and then once the bank gets paid, then you can make a claim for the rest of the money?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, with that, I'll make a motion to deny the protest, or are they, are they withdrawing their protest? So, I will make a motion to strike item number 18 in light of the protester being willing to withdraw their protest and collect excess funds through the court.
So, strike instead of denies, that's where we're going with this, then?
Yeah, that would be preferred.
Yeah, I got the look.
Okay.
All right, I'll make the strike item number 18.
If there's no further discussion on this by any of the parties, then I'm, I can second that motion to strike item number 18. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item 18 is stricken, two to one, two to zero. Sorry.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone. So, that one is concluded. Thank you, Mr. Bates, for coming. This was very helpful.
Thank you so much for your help. Very enlightening to me as well. We'll, we'll have an interesting process working through this new system, and hopefully, we'll get the judges on board, and they'll understand it, and it can be used smoothly in the future.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Like medicine, practicing law is a never-ending cycle.
That's exactly right.
With that, unfortunately...
That's the end of our...
I, I have no other items except maybe a public comment. Are there any public comments that should be brought to our attention? Generally, it's always one way. We can't really respond, especially if I'm being sworn at or thrown, things thrown at me, but not seeing none, then I, I think we have a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.